I'd invite you to join me in the invocation followed by the pledge led by Commissioner Coleman. Father God, we thank you for this day and for the blessings of this day. We thank you, Lord, that you have bestowed upon us freedom, freedom to assemble in this very hour to discuss and deliberate the affairs of our local government. Lord, we lift up those around the country that have suffered in many different ways, those in California that have been devastated by fires, the horrific shooting in Las Vegas, and for those in Texas and Florida and the Caribbean, and even those here in Glen County that have been, that have had flood damage to their houses. Lord, we pray that you would restore normalcy and, Father, that you would, your hand of mercy would be upon all of those. Lord, we thank you tonight for this time together. We pray for wisdom and discernment that we would make decisions that are in the greater good, and it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda tonight is a public comment period, and Mr. Clint Keane, would you come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Clint Keane, and I live at 146 Midway Circle, Blith Island, Brunswick. And I'm here tonight. I know there's been so much devastation throughout our whole country with a lot of things going on, but I want to go ahead and direct, what I want to get to is, I made a phone call last year. We've got some issues with the land erosion over there on Blith Island. I know Mr. Browning's aware of what I'm talking about. He and I's had several conversations, but we had one last year, right after Matthew, and there was some land, it was eroded away, areas that had washed away, and I talked to him about it. And in that conversation, he and I, you know, I said, "Well, I heard that this land was being abandoned by the county." And I says, "Yes, no, you know, I don't really know if it is or not." I said, "But if you find out anything, I'd appreciate you letting me know." Well, that was kind of the end of our conversation, and until this storm come through, and the areas that was washed out from Matthew, I live right there on the river, and I watched the water come in. My backyard, it wasn't necessary, this didn't have to happen. I mean, if something had have been done, this would have never happened. But anyway, needless to say, I had it in my yard, my glass is pretty brown, but we're very blessed and we're very thankful. We're none damaged, but what I want to address is this piece of the property. In our conversation that we had here just a couple weeks ago when I talked with Mr. Browning, he said that the county was not going to do anything with it, and he said they was going to let Mother Nature have its way. And he said it was just too expensive, you can't stop Mother Nature. And then my comment was that that is a fact, we can't stop Mother Nature, but we're always doing things to try to prevent her from doing as much damage as possible. Over the last three days, there's some work that has been going on, and I don't know if it's FEMA, because Mr. Browning said he was going to try to get FEMA involved in it, or if it's the county. I'm very appreciative of what is happening and what's going on. I don't know how far it's going to go. There were some safety issues. The actual embankment had washed out a walkway that people ride every afternoon, all during the day, on the weekends with the golf carts. I mean, it was completely eroded out. So I don't know if what's going on now is a safety issue, or if we're going to continue to do something with this land that's eroded. If it's, I heard talk that it was going to go back to the homeowners, that they were wanting the homeowners to take responsibility of it. I just want a little information on what we can expect, what's going to happen, which direction we're going to go in, because my statement last year was, if we're not going to do anything, like I said, if it belongs to me, I'll have to do something with it. But if it belongs to the county, then we need to do something, you know, here before it gets any worse. So I'm here tonight, and I'm lost, concerned about what's going to happen. Is the county going to let Mother Nature have its way in the future, or we're going to just sit back and watch it happen over and over, or is it going to go back to the homeowners? So that's where I'm at.
Mr. Keane, we normally don't respond to public comment, but some of your comments were directed at Commissioner Browning, and Commissioner Browning, if you'd like to add anything, it's fine. If you don't, that's fine, it's well.
Yes, I would just say for the public's information, we're talking about the bank on Turtle River was washed away. It's not his property, you know, and I told him, "We're not going to go out there and stabilize the bank of Turtle River to protect people's property." And not unless these other commissioners decide they want to start going out and stabilizing the banks of these rivers. But I understand, you know, you had some erosion up there, but until you own that property and can do something with it, that property along that riverbank is public property, and I don't think we're going to go out there and stabilize the banks of Turtle River. So just want the public to understand what we're talking about.
Mr. Keane, I, thank you. I'm not going to allow back and forth here, but I did feel like the Commissioner Browning, since you did direct that to him, needed, if he wanted to respond. So, thank you very much. I can tell you that there are some things going on with FEMA and GMA and the Corps of Engineers on a multitude of issues in the county as a result of Matthew and Irma, and that, you know, we're just going to have to work through the process. And whether the riverbanks are going to be part of it, I can't tell you. But nobody is just kind of looking the other way. I think everybody's going to be engaged in trying to do what's best for the community.
Yes, I understand. At some point, though, something will have to be done, because if it keeps eroding away the way it is, then it will be up to my property, then it will no longer belong to the county. It will be mine.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And I'd rather do something about it now than to wait until it gets that far.
Okay.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, sir. All right, next item, commission presentations and announcements. Presentation of Medal of Valor to the County Police Special Weapons and Tactics Team. Who's got this one?
Deputy.
Deputy Kyle.
I'm Assistant Chief Scott Trout for the Glen County Police Department, and tonight we are awarding the Medal of Valor to members of the Police Department's Special Weapons and Tactics Team. It is my pleasure to join all of you, along with Interim Chief Powell, and County Manager Hours, and the entire Board of Commissioners, in presenting these medals. And it's a tremendous honor for me to stand among so many distinguished police officers and true heroes. First, I'd like to extend a special welcome to the family and friends of our award recipients and those that are in the audience tonight. If you're a family member or a friend here for this award, would you please stand so we can honor you too? Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for the support that you give us every day, every day of the year, and behind the scenes, what you do for us. Thank you. Thank you. As you know, these officers, your loved ones, served on the front lines of our fight of the public safety each and every day. And we're here tonight to recognize remarkable contributions of a courageous few. Every day, the citizens of Glen County call upon our public safety officers to respond to emergencies, to protect our loved ones, and to safeguard our community. Every day, we rely on these officers to do the difficult and often dangerous work of protecting all that we hold dear, often without expressing the gratitude and the respect they so richly deserve. As you can see, some are in uniform, some are in coat and ties, and these officers, many of them have dual roles. They're investigators, they're patrol officers, they're supervisors, and yet they also train very diligently to be an elite Special Weapons and Tactics Team that serves this community very well and can respond very quickly and rapidly to incidents that occur. And every day, these outstanding police officers answer our call without hesitation. They patrol our neighborhoods, they investigate crimes and assist victims, and they keep our communities, our homes, and our most vulnerable citizens safe from harm. The Medal of Valor is a medal awarded for bravery. It's commonly called the Medal of Bravery. It is given to personnel who have served with gallantry, often for those who have engaged in specific acts of heroism. Pursuant to our policy, our Glen County Police Policy, the Medal of Valor may be awarded for a heroic act where the officer was fully aware of the imminent threat to his or her safety, in which conditions were extremely hazardous, with a strong possibility that the officer can have suffered a serious injury or be killed. Our award recipients are Lieutenant Corey Sasser, Investigator Ronnie Cooper, Investigator Garrett Wright, Investigator Rick Lester, Leska, Investigator Jeremy Stagner, Investigator Eric Butler, Officer Tim Hollingsworth, Officer Sean Johnson, Investigator Chris Lauther, NPO David Haney, Officer Cameron Arnold, Officer Donald Walker, and Investigator Parker Marcy. Most of those individuals are here tonight and stand here before you. Y'all can take pictures. I know y'all have, the audience has a good view of them too, and the commission has a good view of these guys. But the act of heroism, the act of bravery is for, your act of heroism in placing yourselves at great risk of personal injury or death by putting the safety in the interests of others above your own to save lives and to reduce the potential for further violence. Whereas, on February the 23rd, 2017, as a Special Weapons and Tactics Team, you were executing a search warrant for the arrest of a subject wanted in the state of Indiana who had threatened to shoot others in Indiana and a law enforcement officer. While executing the warrant at a residence on Blith Island, the suspect fired gunshots at officers who were outside with a Uzi submachine-style gun. Each of you remained calm, decisive, and continued without hesitation to find the suspect in the house, to stop his act of shooting threat, and to arrest him. As necessitated by the suspect's continued and immediate threat towards officers, a team member shot the suspect that did stop his threat without harm to officers, and then they immediately provided lifesaving tactics and to keep the person alive and bring him to justice. So they not only faced the threat, but they also performed lifesaving measures as well. In recognition of your courage, teamwork, and commitment to the safety and interests of others above your own to save lives while faced with a hazardous condition to your personal safety, I hereby award the Police Medal of Valor to you this 19th day of October in the year of our Lord 2017.
Any of you who want to take pictures, just come on down. You ain't got to do what you need to do.
You guys want to just file out in front of the diocese here? That'd be fine. I think you'd probably get better pictures that way. Just come on around here and, congratulations. Congratulations. Come on down, guys.
Come on down.
You probably don't want to have your picture made with us, but...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your service. You are certainly welcome to stay. We're going to get into page 243 of the budget tonight, so I know y'all will be excited to hear about that. But again, enough can't be said for those of you in the audience that are supporting these guys. They couldn't do it without you.
You should have told them to all go to Marshview and have a meal, and just put it on Bill Brunson's, uh, credit card.
Marsa.
Yeah, Marsa. We can't staple that on Turtle River.
All right, okay. The next item on the agenda is, my pleasure to present a proclamation designating October the 15th through the 21st as Friends of the Library's Week in Glen County, and I'll do that right now. Whereas, Friends of the Marshes of Glen Library raise money that enables our library to move from good to great, providing the resources for additional programming, much-needed equipment, support for children's summer reading, and special events throughout the year. And whereas, the work of the Friends highlights on an ongoing basis the fact that our library is the cornerstone of the community, providing opportunities for all to engage in the joy of lifelong learning and connect with the thoughts and ideas of others from the ages past and the ages present. And whereas, the Friends understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and advocate to ensure that our library gets the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to print and electronic materials, along with expert assistance in research, readers advisory, and children's services. And whereas, the Friends' gift of their time and commitment to the library sets an example for all in how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagement and the betterment of our community. Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the Glen County Board of Commissioners that it hereby designates October the 15th through the 21st, 2017, as Friends of Library Week in Glen County, Georgia, and urges everyone to join the Friends of the Library and thank them for all they do to make our library and community so much better. And witness thereof, I have sent my hand this 17th day of October 2017, Bill Brunson. We've already had a pre-picture op, and so if the president would come up, I'll present you with this proclamation. Nobody wants to stay. We have some smart people out there. It's kind of like the Pied Piper, I think, maybe. All right, we have some public hearings. Alcohol beverage license. Public hearings will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side, with five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allocated. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Consider the transfer of a license for 2017 alcoholic beverage license issued to Ruby Tuesday, Tuesday, 513 Mall Boulevard, Brunswick, Georgia. The license is to sell distilled spirits, malt beverages, and wine for consumption on premises of a restaurant. Sunday sales permitted. Charles Edward Eskenazi licensee, Chief Powell.
Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding that Mr. Eskenazi is on his way, but he's running late.
Oh, okay.
And so if the board would be kind enough to, you know, delay it until he can be here.
Okay, we'll go ahead with the land use permit and, all right, item four. CUP 3565 Miracle Care Adult Daycare. Consider a conditional use permit to allow for an adult daycare facility at 106 Shoppers Way. The property is owned General Commercial, G.C., partial ID 03-10546 and 03-11408, DCE Corporate Center applicant. Ms. Thompson.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Pamela Thompson, the Director of Community Development, and this is, as you said, a public hearing for a conditional use permit request. This is, the applicant is DCE Corporate Center. The name of this project is Miracle Care Adult Daycare. The property address is 106 Shoppers Way. It's 2.06 acres. This is a multi-unit building. The suite is 3,786 square feet. The existing zoning is General Commercial, and adult daycare is a conditional use in this zoning district. So the request before you this evening is to consider this application to allow for, to allow for an adult daycare facility. This is the location map and current zoning map. This is aerial photograph of the property, as well as photographs of the site from the street. The proposed project will convert a former gym and rehab facility to an adult daycare. Space will include a full kitchen, ADA-compliant restrooms, two activity rooms, and several private offices for staff. These are the considerations according to the zoning ordinance. This project is not anticipated to have a significant impact on Shoppers Way or adjoining streets. Shoppers Way is located between Mall Boulevard and Scranton Connector. Parking is located in front of the existing building. Signs will comply with our current sign ordinance. The hours and manner of operation are consistent with the surrounding area. The outdoor lighting will comply with our ordinances. Access is currently provided via Shoppers Way, a public street, and the proposed use is compatible with the surrounding commercial land uses. The Mainland Planning Commission heard this at their October 2nd, 2017 meeting, and recommend approval of the conditional use permit. These are your possible motions. I'm available for any questions, and the agent for the applicant is available for any questions.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Any questions for staff? Okay, this is a public hearing item, and I would request that anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application may do so now.
I'm Julian Smith, known as Putty. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, for this opportunity. I visited the site this afternoon and am prepared to speak in favor of granting a conditional use permit for the Miracle Care Adult Daycare Center, but I wish they would change their name from Miracle Care, because I'm not sure they're really prepared for miracles. But, now, it is my custom to do private site visits in order to prepare myself to speak on proposed projects, and I did so today. I usually want something of value. In this case, I could see this as a very convenient location for an adult daycare facility. It's tucked away at the back of a mall where there should be less traffic. There's plenty of parking. The building is sturdy. On one side is a psychiatric practice, on the other side, a healthcare facility, and there may be some cooperation between these facilities. I also discovered that the space occupied by a former gym and rehabilitation center has been gutted, and that the walls of these new rooms, and the walls of new rooms have been framed, that new wiring and plumbing are being installed, and so on. In other words, I learned that in Glen County, developers or applicants sometimes spend time and money doing things for which they do not have a conditional use permit. That suggests they are confident that the planning board and the county commission will go along with their plans. During my visit, I noticed floor plans that showed how the 3,786 square feet of this suite will be used. I was pleased to see that there's sleeping rooms for the patients in daycare, but I suggest that future online reports for similar conditions, for similar conditional use should include floor plans. And by the way, in all of the photographs or diagrams or illustrations in your packet and in the Mainland Planning Commission packet, there's no indication of where exactly in this large building this suite is located. Floor plans would have helped with that. I went back to the online report for this project when it came before the Mainland Planning Commission earlier this month, and I saw that the September 26 staff report listed the application itself as an attachment, but no application was provided in the online report available to the public. And I doubt there was, the application was even provided to the MPC. We learned at the IPC meeting on Tuesday night that it is not standard practice to include the actual application from the owner or the owner's agent with most packets of reports, and that that was changed for the meeting last Tuesday. I appreciate that. The staff report before you tonight does not include or even list the application, and I suggest application forms always be included in the information available to the public, as well as to the boards, because I've noticed in the past, there's sometimes a contrast or contradiction or difference between what is applied for and what we find described in the staff reports. So let me end by making two modest recommendations, which you may find immodest and radical. First, that the planning commissions, particularly the Island Planning Commission, be authorized to decide whether or not applications are complete. to decide whether or not applications are complete. That decision should not rest with the planning staff, and I have many reasons for suggesting that based upon my experience elsewhere and my experiences here in Glen County, and I'd be happy to discuss with you separately. Second, at the time the planning commission accepts the application as complete, the commission should schedule a public site walk to take place before the public hearing and deliberation on the merits of the proposal. This county needs site walks to help the public understand what is being done. And I suspect that any number of things that were done, that should not have been done or that were done poorly, those decisions might have benefited from having the public say, "Hold on a minute. What about this? What about that?" So please consider changing the operating procedures for our planning commissions to include required public site walks with records. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else that would like to speak in favor of the application?
Commissioners, I'm Robert Driggers. I'm the agent for the applicant. I'll just very quickly say this is a very good use for this building and for the location. It will upgrade the property and the neighborhood. I'm happy to answer any questions. We did submit a floor plan, so I believe Pam Thompson's office has received that. We will...